Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 13th, 2015 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. Just a couple of quick announcements. I want to mention that if you happen to have a cellphone on, if you could please turn it off or put it on silent or vibrate, we'd appreciate it. We also have an upcoming event. It's actually tomorrow evening. We have our regular quarterly coffee with your council. So if you'd like to come out, we'll be at Faith Baptist Church at 30505 Daggsboro Road. Again, that's Faith Baptist Church for our quarterly coffee with your council, and this is an opportunity for you to set the agenda. We get to set the agenda often enough, so it'll be your opportunity to decide what we talk about. It's an open forum for conversation. Next on our agenda is the city invocation, so I'd like to invite Reverend Dr. David L. McLendon, Sr., to come forward from St. James AME Zion Church to deliver the city invocation. Reverend?
Let us pray. Almighty God, you are our creator and our sustainer. You are our light and our fortress. You are our wisdom and our strength. We ask for your guiding hand to lead us through this meeting. May we approach our tasks with wisdom, and may we approach our members with respect. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work this day. We ask all these things in your powerful name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. If you'll please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This evening, we are joined by our friend and Wycomico County's Health Officer, Lori Brewster, for our community organization presentation. Ms. Brewster?
Thank you all for having me tonight. I was asked if I wanted to speak, and trying to determine a topic, because we have so many initiatives that are occurring in the Health Department, that it was a little difficult to narrow it down to just one topic. But in looking at the issues that are occurring in our community, one of the biggest issues that we're trying to tackle, both with our local health improvement coalition, as well as services in the Health Department, has to do with chronic disease management. Chronic disease is the number-one killer across the country, but also in Wycomico County. So we've had a number of initiatives occurring, many of which the city has been involved in. The first one, about five years ago, we received a community transformation grant. It actually ended June 30th, and they've more or less repurposed some of the dollars. And that initiative was to look at policy development, policy changes in the community, rather than service delivery. So looking at things like healthy food networks and community gardens and walking trails and that type of thing. So we were one of 17 counties on the shore that, or in Maryland, that got this funding, and like I said, it ended this year. Some of the strategies that we worked on for this is we partnered with Delmarva Shorebirds, and they presented every year with some of the camps, looking at youth issues surrounding tobacco, healthy eating, and being active. And that went very well. The players actually went out and met with the students and, or the campers, and that was very successful. We did a permanent marking of walking routes, both downtown and some others. We also support the Walk at Lunch. We've been doing it twice a year. With this initiative, did a lot of smoke-free housing and smoke-free zones, increasing the number of smoke-free campuses in the community. So we really feel like we've made a step there. New this year is a program called 1422. I don't have a clue as to why it's called 1422, but it's the Center for Disease Control. We were selected as a community in need for these dollars, and this is to help us implement some environmental strategies so that we could reduce some deaths and disability due to diabetes, which is a huge issue in our community. Heart disease and stroke, and our goal is to reduce it by 3%. Doesn't sound like a lot, but any movement on that needle is a blessing. Also looking at reducing the prevalence of obesity among adults in Wycomico County, and we're trying to reduce that by 3% as well. Some of the strategies that we're looking at is strengthening community promotion of physical activity. That's difficult in and of itself. Many of us are not as active as what we should be. We're looking at policy development in business to allow people to have breaks so that they can take walks during the day to increase their activity. And developing and/or implementing transportation and community plans that promote walking, making walking surfaces safer so that people don't trip and fall while they're trying to become healthy. We also have a healthier food strategy incorporated in that, trying to look at implementing food and beverage guidelines, including sodium intake. That's a little more difficult, because we have so many fast-food industries that have high sodium and trans fat. We are also increasing people's knowledge about fruits and vegetables. You know, we all grew up knowing how many fruits and vegetables we were supposed to have, but also making, trying to make it be a healthier option and make it so that people realize that they can buy healthier foods without it being as costly as what they think it should be. And in doing that, we have worked with the other two Health Departments and developed a brochure that gives you all of the local fresh farmers' markets, pretty much, so I can pass those out to you all.
Thank you.
So we've also been working with work sites, including the city of Salisbury, to implement physical activity and nutrition policies and procedures. Doesn't go as fast as what I would like in general, because I think that we need to have healthier policies. We also are working with three lower counties to implement some changes for data sharing, because that is one of the primary family practice positions. Been doing a lot of advertising on billboards, encouraging every person in the community to ask their provider about their A1C. A lot of people don't know what that is, but it measures their blood sugar over a 90-day period. Getting blood pressure numbers, as well as cholesterol numbers. We also did a brochure called Get Moving. This actually gives a lot of the gym locations, free exercise locations. There's, a lot of people don't know that there's a free exercise downtown with the exercise locations within the walking routes. We also received some dollars through the Maryland Million Hearts Program. We were the county on the eastern shore that was chosen for this competitive funding. And it's for prevention, identification, and control of hypertension, diabetes, and prediabetes. Our mantra is, if people know what prediabetes is and how to prevent it from moving to full-blown diabetes, that we could actually make a dent in the healthcare cost in our community. So we're doing a number of things with that, trying to do some educational awareness on what people need to know as far as their medical conditions may be. We have an agreement with PRMC and MAC Incorporated to do some work on community case management of individuals that have hypertension, diabetes, or even prediabetes. And MAC Incorporated, for this grant, is doing some work with diabetes self-management, teaching people how to manage their conditions. And then, of course, we are doing Healthiest Maryland Business, which City of Salisbury signed up for, I believe. And the goal with that is to reduce the burden of chronic disease, again, with policy and programs within the community to address some of the nutritional issues, the lack of exercise, I should say. So we are in the process of recruiting business leaders, as well as other employers, to make an organizational commitment. We go out, we do a scorecard with the business to help them identify areas of concern in their program policies and procedures. And we give them any technical assistance that we can to help them become a more healthier business in our community. And I think we have 25, yes, we have 25 Healthiest Maryland Businesses in Wycomico County. And we hold an annual worksite wellness educational forum. And this past year, we had over 100 businesses represented at that forum. Now, this was for the tri-county area, but we were really pleased with that, that there were that many businesses interested in hearing what they could do differently to decrease their healthcare costs. So we're taking a broad brush to chronic disease. Chronic disease touches every facet of our community. If you think about your friends and family members, you know, some of them may have a chronic disease, hypertension, diabetes, prediabetes. The volume of prediabetes in our community is extremely high. We have been doing a program called Lifestyle Balance in cooperation with the YMCA. We provide health coaches to individuals to get them on track, to get to their ideal fasting blood sugar. And they also get weighed, not like Weight Watchers. They have a coach that works with them for three months following the program. And the last group that went through, 25 people, they lost over 500 pounds, which we were just so excited about. We've had five cohorts go through, and it's just, it's an exciting program. It is a CDC-sponsored program, and we are in the process of trying to obtain certification for Wycomico County's program. So with that, I could talk all day about what the Health Department is doing, but you don't want me here all day.
Well, you're busy.
We are, and that's just one small component of our Health Department. You know, we have a lot of services that we provide, and a lot that we're doing in many areas of our community, including the substance abuse issues that we're seeing in our community.
I know it. Thank you. Are there any questions for Lori?
Just a quick one.
Mr. Please.
In your programs, is there a continuity with what the schools are teaching? Do you have, does it dovetail so that there's a continual effort afterwards?
We are working with the school system, and the school system is part of our local health improvement coalition. So they're getting the same information that everyone else is getting. They have also been very involved in the Healthiest Maryland Business Project as well.
Great, great.
So.
And I hope that their cooking classes or something of the sort go along with that in the high schools.
They have changed their, some of their nutritional guidelines for the school lunches, but we don't have a whole lot of control over what people bring into schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Discussion. All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Nichols?
Good evening.
Good evening.
On the consent agenda tonight, we have the June 1st, 2015 Work Session Minutes, the June 8th, 2015 Regular Meeting Minutes, Resolution Number 2516, approving a Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development Community Legacy Grant Application for Funds for Acquisition of Abandoned Dilapidated Houses and Demolition of Those Houses That Are Beyond Rehabilitation. Resolution Number 2517, declaring that Riverview Commons LLC is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at 150 West Market Street in Salisbury, Maryland. Resolution Number 2518, declaring that WMDT is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at 202 West Main Street in Salisbury, Maryland. Resolution Number 2519, approving the Chief of Police to enter into a reimbursement agreement between the City of Salisbury Police Department and the Maryland State Police Grants Management Section to manage allocated funding for equipment and supplies for the Eastern Shore Information Center. Resolution Number 2520, accepting federal grants awarded by the U.S. Justice Department through an Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program for maintaining and upgrading the technology of the Salisbury Police Department in the areas of providing equipment for the Salisbury Police Tactical Unit and for computer technology, hardware, and software. Resolution Number 2521, approving the appointment of Lee Beecham to the Zoo Commission for Term Ending December 31st, 2018. Resolution Number 2522, approving the reappointment of Darren Lumpkin to the City Park Committee for Term Ending June 30th, 2018. Resolution Number 2523, approving the reappointment of Thomas W. Hayes to the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals for the Term Ending June 30th, 2020. And finally, Resolution Number 2524, approving the appointment of Edward L. Torbert to the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals for Term Ending July 31st, 2020. And that would be it.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Do we have either Mr. Lumpkin, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Torbert, or Mr. Beecham with us? Any of you? Would you mind standing for a moment, so we can thank you for your service to the city? Thank you. Also, I don't think we have a representative of ABC 47, WMDT, or Riverview Commons here, but we thank them for their investment in the city.
May I ask that question regarding the employees? Numbers of employees, the two criteria for enterprise zone credits are put $50,000 into the business, or increase the business by two employees, or hire two new employees. Mr. Tillman, are you aware, is that a net increase in the employee base of the organization? Or is this just hire two and fire two, or do we know?
I don't know, is the answer.
Okay. Can we put that on the, you know, put that on the list for finding out, so that we know?
Ms. Portikowski.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Portikowski.
Ms. Portikowski, come on. Great.
I didn't know you were back there. Hiding. Well, now you've been found.
Yeah, that would be a net increase, so it's only for new jobs.
Indeed, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item on our agenda is the Award of Bids. I'll entertain a motion to, I'm sorry?
Do we have other?
Yes, we did. We did, though.
Yes, we did.
It was unanimous. Is the Award of Bids. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Award of Bids.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Ms. Miller?
Good evening. There's only one item on for this evening. It's a request for a declaration of surplus. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare the following handgun surplus. It's an automatic pistol, model 21. Upon declaration of surplus and approved by the council, the aforementioned handgun will be given to retired police officer Corporal Brian Whitman as a retirement gift.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the Award of Bids as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Chief Duncan, please pass along our thanks for Corporal Whitman's service to the city. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2503. This is for the reading of the resolution, as well as a public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second.
The public hearing's scheduled for 6:40. Do we need to wait?
We're going to wait. It's going to take a few minutes to get through the various other things that we have. Mr. Stevenson?
Go for it.
Or Mr. Tillman?
Okay.
You'll switch a room.
This is the resolution regarding the annexation of the property for Tri-County Council. A resolution of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation of the City of Salisbury of certain area of land situated contiguous to and binding upon the easterly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as the Tri-County Council Walston Switch Road Annexation, and the application of the city zoning classification to the area being an area located on the westerly side of and binding upon Walston Switch Road, north of the intersection of Walston Switch Road and US Route 50. Whereas the city has received a petition to annex with correction dated May 7th, 2015, and that correction was the addition of a small parcel that was inadvertently omitted, signed by at least 25% of the persons who are resident registered voters and of the persons who are owners of at least 25% of the assessed value of the real property in the area sought to be annexed and being located on the westerly side of and binding upon Walston Switch Road, north of the intersection of Walston Switch Road and US Route 50 and improved county roads, said parcel being contiguous to and binding upon the easterly corporate limits of the city. And whereas the city has cause to be made a certification of the signatures on said petition for annexation and has verified the person signing the petition represent at least 25% of the persons who are eligible to vote and property owners, owning 25% of the assessed value of the real property in the area to be annexed, all as of April 2nd, 2015, as will more particularly appear by the certification of W. Clay Hall Surveyor, City of Salisbury, attached here, too, by the certification of Les Hall Surveyor of the City of Salisbury concerning the correction of the petition. And whereas it appears that the petition with correction dated May 7th meets all the requirements of the LOL, and whereas the public hearing is scheduled for this evening at 6:00 PM, now therefore, is it 6:40 PM? Is that the correction?
It was advertised.
6:00 PM, okay. Now therefore be it resolved by the council, the City of Salisbury that has hereby proposed and recommended that boundaries of the City of Salisbury be changed, so as to annex to and include within said city all the parcel land together where the persons residing there and in their property contiguous to and binding upon the westerly side of and binding upon Walston Switch Road and being more particularly described on Exhibit A. Now, in your packet that was in the materials, the exhibits were not there. Well, they, everything was there, but it was jumbled for your information in front of it and not with the petition itself. So the, what, the appropriate description is the one entitled Exhibit A, Tri-County Council Walston Switch Road Annexation, that begins a certain area of land containing two parcels of land. That is the correct Exhibit A to that document. Behind that is a map, which I think for those of us who can understand, that thing is much clearer with regard to the property that's being annexed. Both the larger parcel and the smaller parcel are the property that is being annexed. The certification following that is the Les C. Sherrell Surveyor, which is the certification that 25% of the voters and 25% of the property values are included. The next document there that should be Exhibit B is the Report of Annexation for the Walston Switch Road Tri-County Council for the Lower Eastern Shore of Maryland Annexation to the City of Salisbury. That document is the Exhibit B. That document is the one which has the aerial photograph in it and consists of five pages of typed information, and then attached to that is the copy of the plat, which is identified as Attachment 1. Attachment A1 is the county zoning map referred to in the document. Attachment A2 is the city zoning map referred to in the document that should be attached to that unsigned copy of the annexation resolution. The next document, Exhibit C to the annexation resolution, is the actual annexation agreement. That is in your packet, and attached to that is Attachment A1, which is just another copy of the legal description of the property with the plat. It's just because it's, you know, found under a sub-document, it was given the designation A1 instead of A, as it appears in the prior document. And that is the entire Resolution 2503 with regard to the Tri-County Council property.
Okay, before we open the public hearing, are there any questions?
I don't see a map anywhere in here. Did somebody else find it?
No maps.
Is it in the packet?
Yeah. Four or five.
All the maps that I referred to are actually there, but when the packet was put together, they were not labeled, and they were just.
Yeah, I found the documents at the end, but I didn't find them.
It's on, I'll give it to you in a second.
Jeff, do you want to bring that up here? Maybe we can put it on the camera.
Yeah, that's the, that's the actual plat.
Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with the public information.
Right, right, right.
Just looking forward to it.
So.
What page did you say, Jack?
70, oops.
We've got US Route 50 and Walston Switch Road, and the two parcels, the one being the majority on which the Tri-County Council building sits, and then the smaller parcel at the, at the intersection of the two properties.
70, no, 92, I'm sorry.
Actually, even better.
Oh, I found it.
Got it?
Yes, thank you.
Pretty color.
I think I skipped around so much when I was reading through everything that I forgot that it was, that I didn't see it at all, but I couldn't find it now, so thank you.
Okay. I'd like to, at this time, go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to testify, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in by the city clerk. Okay, now close the public hearing. All right. Any other discussion? And gentlemen, anything you'd like to add? Anything you'd like to add? Any other discussion or questions from council? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2503, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 2504. This is the adoption of the annexation plan for the same property in question, the Tri- County Council Walston Switch Road Annexation. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2504.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Tillman?
A resolution of the City of Salisbury to adopt an annexation plan for a certain area of land situated contiguous to and binding upon the easterly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as the Tri-County Council/Walston Switch Road Annexation, being an area located on the westerly side of and binding upon Walston Switch Road, north of the intersection of Walston Switch Road and US Route 50. Whereas the city is considering the annexation of parcels of land located on the west side of Walston Switch Road and improved county roads, and said parcels being contiguous to and binding upon the easterly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury. And whereas the City of Salisbury is required to adopt by annexation, an annexation plan for the proposed area of annexation pursuant to local government article 19, excuse me, local government article formerly Article 23A, Section 19O of the Maryland Annotated Code. And whereas the public hearing is scheduled for July 13th, 2015, at 6:00 PM, now therefore be it resolved by the council, the City of Salisbury, that an annexation plan for the Tri-County Council Walston Switch Annexation set. the Tri-County Council Walston-Switch Annexation set forth as Exhibit B attached here too and made a part here of is adopted for those parcels of land located on the west side of Walston-Switch Road, said parcel being contiguous to and binding upon the easterly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury. Be it further resolved by the City of Salisbury that the council hold a public hearing, as is being done at this time. The annexation, Exhibit B, is the same one that was referred to previously. Instead of beginning with A, it begins with B, just to avoid confusion. It's the same plan, which has the aerial photograph on page two, and the same documents are attached again, including the plat and the county zoning map and the city zoning map. And then Exhibit C to this document is the annexation agreement with the same attachments as previously attached. And the last item there was, is, as part of the annexation agreement, there's a reference to an Exhibit A1, and that, of course, is the actual legal meets and downs description with a copy of the plat attached to it. And this is the, you know, plan that's required by LOL as part of any annexation.
All right. Other questions or comments regarding the plan? Do you want anything to add? Okay. With that, I'll call a question. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2504, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Mr. Pennington, Mr. Bellicic, and Mr. Harmon, thank you for joining us this evening. Glad to see that moving forward. The next item on our agenda is Ordinance Number 2338. This is second reading. This is the appropriation of a budget amendment from 2015 funds for attorney fees. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2338. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2338?
Make the motion for discussion purposes.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And there's a second. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, this ordinance was previously addressed in a special session. The council expressed a desire that any funds additionally appropriated for attorney's fees be limited to a surplus from other departments, that there not be an additional removal of money from the... And used for this purpose. As a result of the efforts of the administration in my office, instead of the figure being what was grossly estimated by the finance office previously, the exact dollar amount that would be required is $12,481 and 30... I think it's 33 cents. The print is so small, I can't read it. But Mr. Corddry, I'm sorry, Keith Cordry, recommended that the council consider allowing the transfer of $12,500 in surplus for this purpose, that that would more than cover.
The First Amendment being proposed is that the amount would be reduced from $25,000 to $12,500?
Correct.
Is that correct? Someone like to propose that in the form of an amendment?
I'll offer that.
There is an amendment. Is there a second? Is there a second to the amendment? Okay. That amendment dies?
Mr. Council President?
Yes?
If the council would consider it, I could provide different language that would accomplish what the council directed, requested the administration do when this was last discussed.
Okay.
It would be identifying those funds within the FY '15 operating budget and allocating the $12,500 required to cover the cost of the remaining legal fees for FY '15. But that's, in effect, a different ordinance.
Well, I think it would be worth hearing, because although I wasn't at that meeting, that was the... My understanding of the consensus from that meeting. Okay, so what has been distributed? Actually, Tom, do you mind?
What we were proposing was $500 from the mayor's office, $2,500 from the finance department, $5,500 from Public Works, $4,000 from the police department for the $12,500 required to decreasing those accounts and increasing the city attorney account by $12,500.
For point of record, if I could just... There was also, from our budget, there was an offer of X number of dollars too.
Yeah, I think it was $500. We just ended up not including it.
So you don't need it, because this came in lower than what we... Okay.
Mr. Cordry's not here, so... But I do have a question. Normally, when we have line items, we have line numbers, but budget line numbers, and we don't have those here. I'm not sure that that really matters, other than... It's not identifying a specific line item that these are coming from. It's saying it's coming from that department, so there may be other movements that have to happen within the department to accumulate that in one line, or would it be multiple lines from different departments?
Forgive me, I'm not able to answer that question at this time. Mr. Porter's in the building. I could ask him to come up. I suspect it's multiple lines to get to that dollar amount.
He is in the building?
Yes.
Can we get him?
Sure.
My concern with that is if it's just transferred from multiple lines, we'll be able to see that when we're looking at future year's budgets and see that transfer and not look like it was money spent out of that line, because the budget line would be reduced. If it's switched all around among departments, that often, I mean, within the department and then taken from one line, that often looks very different, and it's harder to tell where that came from when we do next year's budget.
Yeah, we're keeping things in perspective. I mean, this is all relatively small. I'd like to know, you know, where they came from. I think, in order to feel comfortable voting on this, I would want to know the source. In terms of approving whether or not the administration wants to spend the money that way, that's fine. I mean, you know, this is a lot of information, but it would be helpful, before we vote on it, to have precisely which account it's coming from, for reasons, Ms. Mitchell.
I'll step out and call him real quick. He didn't respond to mine.
Okay. That being said, what I'm seeing here, and again, I wasn't here for this conversation, I think meets the intent from just reading the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, well, I'm gonna recommend... Mr. Stevenson... Oh, nevermind. I was gonna table... I was gonna recommend we table it, but I forgot that Mr. Cordry is fast as lightning.
It's the glasses. He looks so awesome.
Clark Kent. Mr. Cordry?
Yes.
Here's where we're at. Mr. Stevenson's provided the council with updated... With updated language that fits between the "now therefore" and the "be it further or ordained" clauses in Ordinance Number 2338, which shows the departments, the four departments from which decreases would occur. Can you help us figure out which accounts those are coming from within those departments?
Well, just looking at the ordinance, it looks consistent with our typical budget amendment language, where we don't often specify an account consistent with our budget ordinance that we pass at the beginning of the year. It just identifies a department.
I guess what's... Maybe what's only... Maybe the only thing that's missing, although I thought we've got more specificity than that, but maybe what's missing is the associated account number or line number with each of those departments. Is that the only piece that's missing that would typically show?
Again, as you know, the budget ordinance that we just passed, for example, for '16, the ordinance itself just has the groupings and totals for the budget ordinance groups, and it really doesn't identify accounts. And so, we can, by ordinance, use those groupings to make our amendments.
Well, I'm looking at even the published Ordinance Number 2338, and, for example, current year's surplus, we have an account number following.
Sometimes we do for the... For that account, because it's a revenue account, but if you'll look back at, you know, the other offset, it usually just has a department. I mean, we could identify accounts, and it wouldn't have any... It wouldn't be any problem. It's just that I don't think that they brought them here today for that purpose.
And just in the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish, I think what both myself and Ms. Mitchell were trying to get to is, when we go to do a next year's budget, just to make sure we're looking at apples to apples, maybe a note next to... For ourselves, so that we understand if something is different, what was different. In other words, the 500, where you can make a note on the... As far as I'm concerned, you could make a note in the prep materials, and that would be fine with me.
I'm just looking at, for instance, Public Works, $5,500. And in the grand scheme of things, that's not a lot, but in some of the lines in the budget that we just did, that was a lot. That could make a huge difference. So, maybe even just a follow-up after this of where it actually came from, and then we could put it in the folder for next year's budget.
That's fine.
So we remember, but...
Okay, thank you. And when we do next year's, of course, we just did '16, but you would see, it would be reflected in the record as to which account was actually included in that transfer. So when we go to process it, we actually do have to have an account to record the actual transfer.
Right. When we get our detail, we don't get all of that necessarily, and we don't usually get it as a follow-up even. And when we're looking at line by line, if it's coming from multiple lines, I'm sure there's no account that's sitting there with $5,500 extra. I'm pretty confident in that. So it's gonna come from at least a couple of places, and that can get kind of hard to track down.
We can definitely send you out an email identifying that information for you.
I'm looking at it from a much higher level, so to me, just as long as we make sure that it's taking... That it's identified is fine. But... Because it is a relatively small amount, but I... I'm glad to see this. I like this much better. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
I would also say that I'm glad to see that we... Today, we got the June bill for the attorney's fees, and that is included in this number. Is that correct?
Yes.
This pays everything through June 30.
That's correct.
May I?
Yes.
I wasn't gonna say anything, because I'm gonna vote no. I think that this... We did an amendment before for attorney fees, and we're doing it again. And that concerns me, when we do a budget, a yearly budget, and if the department sees they're coming under budget, it seems like something they could do, if we ask other departments to cut back or do 2% less or 3% sacrifice when they do their budget, the Department of Law should do the same thing. Now, it amazes me that we got our June bill in 13 days, within June 30. In the last year, we were not getting them, two and three and four months behind. So, I have a problem with that. As I said before, it's unprofessional. The law department was aware of the concern we have in getting bills, because when you provide a service, proper billing procedure should be put in place, and that is one of the main reasons why I will not support this. I think it's terrible to me that money is being taken out of other departments, whether they returned it or what, when they come before us, when they need funding. I see the police department sacrifice $4,000. Sanitation department, $5,500. To me, the sacrifices made from our department to be fiscal responsible should also be the same with the Department of Law, should be fiscal responsible. I requested audit of the attorney fees. I did not get it for maybe three months, and that concerned me in just reviewing his bills, because some of the things I saw, that was a concern I had. So, I will not be supporting this, and I know it takes four votes. I know we probably had the four votes, but personally, I think the billing process and the budget being adhered to our budget is very, very important, because this is not our money, it's the taxpayers' money. And I think they want everybody to be responsible for seeing that it is used properly. And we can't use it properly if we don't get our bills even to do our annual budget.
Well, I don't disagree. You know, I think the process that, you know, looking back over the last couple of years, you know, I think we're frustrated with a number of things in terms of how we handled the relationship between the council and administration and the city attorney. And I think, you know, you look at the charter changes that have been made, and many of those things have been addressed. That being said, the billing and budgeting has continued to be an issue at council table throughout the year and particularly at budget time. So, you know, I don't disagree with you at all. In fact, you know, I remember sitting here a year ago thinking, this is the last time this is gonna happen.
Yes, absolutely.
And, you know, what changed over the course of the last year was, you know, if you look at those bills, what we were asking from the city attorney's office changed significantly, and the demand increased dramatically, and the compensation didn't. So, you know, a lot more got done for actually slightly less. So, I think, you know, we have to recognize that the relationship is only going to work as well as what we put on the plate of the city attorney. The billing, we've talked about 100 times, and it's obviously improved in the last few months. And the billing can make this process much easier, and I think we all recognize that. So, I was certainly not interested in coming to the table tonight, and I wasn't here for the first reading, but I was certainly not interested in coming to the table tonight and taking money from surplus. Now, finding savings from other departments, I'm not opposed to. I think, you know, this is money that would be returned to surplus if we don't spend... You know, if we don't spend it in this way for services already rendered. So I'm entirely comfortable with what's been proposed here, and I appreciate Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Tillman, the two of you working together to get this to us. So, I'm comfortable with what's being proposed. But Chaney, I agree that this process could be a lot easier. One of the things that I'd like to do, and Mr. Tillman, this is something that I was asking you about at our last meeting, is figure out how we can contract for your services, for these services, in a way that does not cause us to have to deal with a budget amendment at the end of every year. You know, that tells me that we have not structured this relationship in a thoughtful way, and I think we need to rethink that. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, and not to be redundant, Jake, because you weren't here. One of my concerns, and one of the things that we had discussed at great length, was the fact that part of a manager's responsibility in terms of managing a budget is to look at the progression over a period of time, over the year, and then make adjustments accordingly. Had we been up to speed with where we are relative to the budget two months ago, maybe, which we would have known maybe we were in a little bit of a problem, we could plan a little bit and see if there are areas where we could maybe make adjustments internally. That was the major discussion, if you remember, that we had, and I think it still is valid to this point. I'm pleased that the number came in lower than what we had originally discussed, because it started, if I remember correctly, 30, and then went to 20-something, and now it's 14, or 12. But the main thrust has to be that it's a management tool that isn't available based on past performance. I am glad to see the last couple of months, we've started to see some improvement. But until we get to a point where we can see it on a monthly basis or get it within a month, I think we're gonna put ourselves at risk for running into the same situation. We may not be able to do anything about it if the workload is such, but we... But we certainly should be able to talk about it and see if there are other things we could do. That was, that was one of the big discussions points. Thank you.
Another part of that was about the workload and man, being able to manage that. When you know where you stand, you can look at how your workflow is going. And that's been a, a part of the problem. And part of the increased workload has come from a couple of changes that I've seen, where department heads used to draft legislation and then it would go over to the city attorney for fine tuning. Once there was buy-in, that, that we knew that council was on board, this was something we were going to do. Now it seems like, um, the department heads are drafting legislation and going to the attorney. Then it comes to us, or that they're having the city attorney draft the legislation from the beginning. So that's adding to the bill as well. And then the legisla, the legislation gets to us. And if it finds no support, I can think of one in particular that had no support on council, but we were already several thousand dollars in for legal expenses to get that to council. So maybe some, some part of, with us as well as with the administration in talking about what it is we're going to send over there and at what point we're going to send it over to legal. Because I think that, that we're losing a lot of money that way. And, and a lot of, um, Mr. Tillman's time that could be better spent on other projects that we're not seeing back as quickly as we'd like, because we're working on things that really are spinning our wheels. So, um, I think that we can play a part in that as well.
Okay. Would any, um, Mr. Spieth, you have something?
This brings to my mind the question, have we done what we needed to do for 2016 in our budget? Have we used the numbers that we've already been afforded to get a, a good grip on what our budget should be for legal in 2016? And I'll leave that question hanging.
Well, may I?
Yes.
We increased the legal fees of, of budget last year to avoid amendments, uh, budget amendments. We did increase, uh, legal departments. And I think that if you have, um, I think we had suggested in the work session, and Mr. Tillman said he did have that, uh, legal, to keep track of their billing. And all you should be able to do is push a button to see periodically, quarterly, what you're spending to keep track of what you're doing and make us aware, I think as she said, what we're spending. And I never called the attorney, because I'm conscious of the billing. I never, I never use attorney. I used to call Tom or ask, uh, Kim information, because I don't want the bill to come from the city council that we, we're updating the bill. And I think that, um, I think when we increase it, eventually, I think what we're going to see is that we're going to increase the legal department by $300,000. That's a lot of money to me. Then you have other, other attorney fees and, and things might come up. And I think we should, should be conscious, everybody, every department should be conscious of our budget. Because again, it's not our money. And, um, it's other concerns I have, and I don't think I can discuss them publicly. It's just other concerns I do have. It just disturbs me. And I just say, like I said in the meeting, I just get sick and tired of being sick and tired. So I just can't support this, because I thought, I think we gave this department enough money to do what we asked him to do. Uh, I think there's repeats been done. I, I don't know if we've been charged for it. I don't know. I don't know, you know? It's just a confusing, uh, way the bill has been coming to us.
Ms. Shields, and, and I think the structure of that relationship should not be such that, or it should be somewhere between, you know, you should be able to call your attorney when you need advice.
But I don't want you to charge all that money.
Right, you should be able to call your attorney when you need advice. And it shouldn't lead to additional charges if it's structured properly. And somewhere between that and you can call anytime with anything and he never gets any work done. You know, because he's constantly taking calls from everybody in the city. So I thi, I think there's some, there's some balance to be struck. I don't know the right answer. Um, I'm not sure we've found it yet, but I think there's some balance to be struck. Ms. Mitchell?
I have one more comment, uh, that we discussed previously. To Ms. Shields' question about audit and accountability, we've also made suggestions that the department heads review their section of the legal bill for, for completeness and accuracy and, and awareness. So that they're aware of what these things, uh, what their actions are, uh, equate to monetarily for the city. Because I think that right now, if we asked most of them, they wouldn't have any idea what one piece of legislation costs beginning to end from a legal perspective. Irregardless of, uh, city resources, just from the legal's perspective. So, um, I can't believe I just said that word. Irregardless, it's not a word, I'm sorry.
You're forgiven.
So I, I think that that's another piece of the puzzle that we can, can plug in and really help a lot with going forward. Because I really don't want to be doing this at the end of FY16. If we, we should be evaluating it every quarter when we get those quarterly finance statements. And we should know exactly what we spend in legal services up to the end of the previous month, every time, and not quarters or months or half a year later.
I agree. So, uh, at this point, I would entertain a motion, or I would entertain, um, an amendment, um, to strike lines 18 and 19 and replace them with the language we've received, 18, lines 18 through 22. Decrease mayor department by $500, decrease finance department by $2,500, decrease public works sanitation by $5,500, decrease pub, police department by $4,000, and increase city attorney by $12,500.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
I vote nay.
Opposed? Ms. Shields? Okay. All right, on the amended ordinance number 2338, any further discussion? All those in favor of amended ordinance number 2338, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair, chair votes aye, any opposed?
Yes, and nay.
And ordinance number 2338 passes. Thank you all for your diligence. Thank you to the administration for your time on that as well.
Thank you.
Question for Mr. Stevenson, quick please. Regarding this, Mr. Stevenson, is not something already in place amongst the department heads to periodically review, um,
We're making a number of changes internally to make sure that the department heads are more aware of the amount of time they're spending with the legal department, as well as trying to, um, have a better understanding at the mayor's level, what's out there in terms of what, what's been asked of the city attorney, what the deadlines are, what's being provided, what's not been provided. So we're looking at a number of reports that we'll be able to run in the next couple of months to tell us exactly where we are with legal.
Yeah, a finger should be on that pulse all the time. Thank you very much.
The only thing, if I could just say, the only concern I have about that is that department heads don't end up in a situation where they feel like Ms. Shields, and they, like, they can't call when they have a question and they, they do something without, um, checking first. So it, it's a balance. I respect that and good luck. But I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is ordinance number 2339 for second reading. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2339.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Tillman?
This is the ordinance of the city of Salisbury pursuant to chapter 17.228 of title 17, zoning the Salisbury Municipal Code in section 4.04 of article 66B of the annotated code of Maryland. For the purpose of amending section 17.04.120 definitions in section 17.28.020, uses permitted in light of business, in light business and institutional district to add self-storage. This, uh, ordinance was the result of a request, uh, by the church to permit the property which they wish to sell to be used for self-storage. The language that was previously in place did not preclude, like, cubicles out in a field or lot storage. And it was my understanding that you wanted the language revised, that, so that we were talking about so, interior self-storage space that would be compatible with that, uh, district and not just look like a lot with stuff parked on it. Um, and so this language, I worked with Mr. Lennox's department, and this new language would read self-storage, a facility used for the purpose of renting or leasing secure interior individual storage space. This may include rooms, compartments and lockers in which individuals store and remove their own goods, records and personal property on a self-service basis. This definition, definition does not preclude such self-storage inclusion within other use categories, i.e. warehousing. And that last sentence is obviously that, uh, you know, we don't want to preclude that possibility in a ware, in a district that would permit warehousing, for example. Um, and then the other amendment is just to allow self-storage as a permitted use in the light business and institutional district. That's it. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Lennox?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Lennox, you know, understanding that the, um, ordinance before us relates to the permitted uses on this property, um, and, or in this zone. But just looking at the property in question, um, I, I just have a couple of questions about how anything really, um, but particularly self-storage would function, um, and some adjacencies. Curious, this is, uh, along the Northeast Collector Road, the Beaglin Park Drive, correct?
Yes, sir.
The, um, on the, I guess at that point, northwest side of Beaglin Park Drive, along the perimeter of the property that faces the street, um, there is the off-road trail, correct? Or the off-street hiker biker trail?
I believe that runs along that side.
So the, I'm just wondering, and, and at that point, if I remember correctly, at that point in, uh, along Beaglin Park Drive, there's also a vegetated screen, some dense trees. And I don't know if that's on the property in question or on a neighboring property.
The property in question is directly opposite Dallas Drive. And Dallas Drive has across from that intersection, a curb cut that was laid out by the city in conjunction with the property owner when they made the land available for the Northeast Collector. So in order to try to negotiate limited access, the city restricted that to one. So we know where that access point is. You have three acres with residential to the rear. So the thinking here was that this was probably about the best transition type use we could have on that property, giving the property owner, of course, some beneficial use.
The, um, I, I assume the hiker biker trail, for lack of a better term, that, that off-street trail is either on public property or has a public easement on it and is protected?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
And certainly that's something that we would look at when the planning commission sees the comprehensive development plan that's required for this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lennox.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Just, um, a little bit. I think that trail that you're talking about does front on this. And then the vegetation goes just past the open area on it. But it's shown as being included in this change. So that tree line is apparently, um, belongs to the church as well. The one concern I have about storage units going here, storage units generally mean very full cars or trucks going in and out of there, uh, moving vans, that kind of thing. And where we have the access point is right on the turn there. So I'm not sure what's, that's going to do for visibility for traffic and for the people going in and out of the storage unit. So given that use, would the city look at, um, relocating that to maybe one end of the property or the other? So there's only one end to go, that it wouldn't be on that turn.
As mentioned earlier, when, when we did the traffic study initially to lay out the road, that was identified by the design engineers as being the best location on the property. In relation to this particular application, I'd have to say, this is one of the least, uh, traffic-oriented uses that we could see out there. So allowing for some sort of development, again, it would have the least impact on the neighborhood and probably addressing your particular concerns, the least amount of traffic generated among the uses that would otherwise be in the light business and institutional district.
Right, but I, I'm thinking that at that point, they were probably maybe thinking homes or something in there. So regular passenger vehicle kind of traffic. And now looking at being able to put, we're making a change to say you can put storage units in there. And that's their, their stated intention.
Sure.
So I, I do have concerns about a big moving van trying to get in around that.
Sure. The key in this, obviously, was when we've seen these before, is having a careful location of the security gate to make sure there's no stacking out into the public way. They would have to be, be careful within that site. If it was one of the other uses in the area, such as residential, we would be looking at quite a few more vehicles, though.
So, Mr. Lennox, I, I realize, you know, we're not here to, um, approve or disapprove, uh, development of this property. But I, I do just have one more question. Given everything that you just said, and given everything that Ms. Mitchell just asked, and given that it's a 3.06 acre parcel, is it going to fit? And can, are you going to be able to fit self-storage, allowing for the stacking of cars that does not impede traffic?
If they cannot, then it will not be approved.
It's going to be a tight fit.
Sure, the church has not get, has not proceeded with the design plan at this point. So it, it is fairly hypothetical.
Yeah, it's going to be a tight fit. I, I have no problem with amending, um, uh, 66B. I have no problem with, uh, um, amending, um, the light business and industrial district to allow for, uh, for this use. It's just going to be a tight fit there.
The reason, reason we have the comprehensive development plan, because some uses are, while generally appropriate for a district, may not work on a particular site.
Sure.
That's their challenge.
And we are unaware as to whether or not this will be a single-story or a multi-story building. Uh, we're used to seeing storage facilities being single-story, but there are exceptions to that.
That's a fair point.
We do have in the, over by Court Plaza, sewage buildings that do have an elevator. That is possible.
Nor do we know, you know, how many, how many units there will be within the storage facility itself and what the square footage will be on these. Which, you know, some square footage would preclude, uh, something like a moving van going into the, you know, if it's a, it's not a huge space, then the moving van is not going to be able to be accommodated.
Sure. It could very, it could very well be if there's a demand in the market out there. And I think they've envisioned that with Ocean Isle developing, they tend to be near higher density developments that don't have, that never have enough storage space. It could be that another parcel becomes the, the benefactor here.
But these will be things that will be examined by the planning commission?
Absolutely, if we see a plan on this or any site.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. And again, this is for second reading. All those in favor of ordinance 2339, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is ordinance 2340. Uh, this is also for second reading. This is authorizing the expansion of bundles of Joy Daycare. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2340.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Mr. Tillman?
This is the second reading, reading of ordinance 2340, an ordinance to the city to authorize Joy Brumley bundles of Joy Daycare to expand an existing daycare center at 1409 South Division Street in an office. And service residential district as required by title 17, section 17.84.030A of the Salisbury Municipal Code. The proposal, um, do you want me to read it again as I did in the first reading?
I don't think it's necessary. Anyone else?
Basically, the.
You can summarize.
You know, it, it would authorize the, uh, daycare to expand its daycare operation and provides a set of, uh, you know, rules and regulations, basically, that would have to be followed in order to achieve that, kind of listed there.
All right. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance 2340, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda is ordinance number 2341. This is, uh, for second reading as well. This is creating the, um, bike route along, uh, West Main Street from Mill Street to the intersection of Fitzwater and all the way to, along down Fitzwater and Parsons Road as well. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2340.
So moved.
Second.
Or 2341, excuse me?
Second.
All right, I, I think literally everyone seconded that. I'll just, dealer's choice, dealer's choice. All right. Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury created in bike route, which will run along West Main Street from Mill Street to the intersection of Fitzwater and along Fitzwater Street to the intersection with Parsons Road and along Parsons Road to the intersection of Pemberton Drive, providing dedicated bicycle-only lanes and shared bicycle and motorized vehicle lanes as directed by the MDMUTCD, Chapter 9, Traffic Control for Bicycle Facilities, installing lane striping for the dedicated lanes, installing shared lane markings for shared lanes, and installing bicycle markings on pavement and installing bike route signage along the route per the MDMUTCD. Again, I read this the first time, but please, I won't read it again.
I-
Please is me.
I just want to say how proud it makes me that we're continuing this progress along the urban greenway corridor from the west side to the Ward Museum in Schumacher Park and want to see us keep going all the way to Pemberton. Pemberton Park. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance 2341, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2342. This is for second reading. This is repealing and reenacting sections of the building code, particularly updating the plumbing code and IBC. Entertained a motion to approve ordinance 2342.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Mr. Tillman?
All right, in effect, this ordinance, which was previously raised, an ordinance to repeal and reenact sections 1504.010 and 1504.02 of Chapter 1504 Building Code by adopting updated standard building codes in Section 15.04.010, corresponding amendment to the International Building Code 2015 IBC and Section 1504.020, enacting Section 1504.030 amendments to the International Building Code 2015 and deleting Chapter 15.32 Plumbing Standards in their entirety. And the new codes that are being adopted, if you look under 1504.010 are the International Building Code 2015 IBC, International Residential Code 2015 IRC, International Energy Conservation Code 2015 IECC, International Mechanical Code 2015 IMC, International Plumbing Code 2015 IPC, International Fuel Gas Code 2015 IFGC, International Fire Code 2015 IFC, and International Existing Building Code, IEBC.
Questions or comments? Mr. Holland, would you like to add something?
Good evening.
Evening.
Need to strike out the International Fire Code. Chapter, this would be in conflict with the city's current fire code, which is a Chapter 8 of the city code, which references the State Fire Prevention Code, and having the International Fire Code, they will conflict.
So, are you, what lines are you talking about?
Line 42.
So, was that, was that simply added as a, because it was issued as either a compendium as a compendium to the IBC?
Exactly.
Okay. So, it was just kind of put in there by default?
In light of that, while we have it, is that being under the Property Maintenance Code, we need to make the same amendment and-
Yeah. To-
All right.
I'll make a motion to strike line 42.
All right.
Add the word "and" at the end of line 41, and change H to G on line 43.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Holland? Any other comments or questions from council? Okay. And all those in favor of ordinance number 2342, for second reading, as amended, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2343. This is doing the same thing, updating the Salisbury Property Maintenance Code.
Moved again.
Entertained a motion, okay, Mr. Spies. Thank you. And seconded. Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the city amending 15.24.040, referenced codes of the Salisbury Property Maintenance Code. And in light of the changes in the building codes and the new codes that are applicable for the Property Maintenance Code, the intent here is to, again, use the same codes as a guide. As a result of Mr. Holland's statement earlier, I think Susan will need to strike line 32 and renumber the item on line 33 as number seven, and stick the word "and" at the end of line 31.
I'll make a motion of that effect.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion of second on the amendment. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 2343, as amended, second reading, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I do have one question, not pertaining to that directly, but we had inquired about sending letters to the property owners that had, would be affected by the fire sprinkler requirement changing. Has that been done?
No, the properties that I were, that I was referring to is one big parcel of land that's been subdivided out Westwood Development, out near there, it's a residential development.
But some of the properties are individually owned and not-
No, they're owned by banks. That's it. I mean, they've all been-
Okay.
Closed. I don't want to name the developer.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
But I thought you shared with us that there were a couple of properties scattered throughout the city.
No, what I was referring to is just one particular development that's been dormant for five or six years, where it's, where all the road improvements and utilities have been put in, and meter boxes, and they're not to the, they won't be able to support-
It won't make this good.
Right. And, but it's, I believe it's in a bank-owned town. And the other development, which I was referring to, they are currently, you know, still building and under construction. They have been notified and, you know, will take the necessary require, you know, make the necessary requirements or changes or engineering to accommodate sprinkler system come January of, you know, 2016.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is ordinance number 2344, for first reading. This is establishing the Community Development Projects Fund. Entertained a motion to approve ordinance 2344.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second. Mr. Tillman?
First reading, whereas the City of Salisbury is interested in the revitalization of abandoned or troubled properties, and whereas the city has identified that there are properties which have the potential to become lighting influence on the neighborhood therein, and whereas the city believes that the revitalization of the areas therein can be facilitated if the city is able to gain control of troubled properties, and whereas the city believes that the properties have the potential to be redeveloped for low-to-moderate income house, housing, I thought we did that last time, and community purposes, and whereas the city agrees to establish a Community Development Projects Fund to account for revenues and expenditures incurred related to purchase and redevelopment of troubled properties, and whereas the Community Development Project Fund will be a capital projects fund for financial reporting purposes, and whereas the city's FY 2016 budget contains a $200,000 transfer to the Community Development Project Fund. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the Community Development Project Fund be established for the purpose of purchase and redeveloping troubled properties, and be it further ordained by the City Council, the City of Salisbury, that these funds, that these funds to establish this Community Development Project Fund shall only be used for the project's stated purpose and shall not be withdrawn for other uses unless authorized by the City Council and Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do have a question. Earlier tonight, we, we accepted a proposal for the community legacy grant application for $100,000 for basically the same thing. Will that money be treated differently than this $200,000? Will that go in here?
It won't go in here.
Okay. And how, how will we determine whether we are using legacy money or these funds on various projects?
Isn't that the downtown grants program?
Yeah, that's the, the-
The description was pretty much the same as what we-
Not the same, not the same use. I wish Miss Stam were still here, but it's not the same use.
Okay. All right.
I thought those were the downtown grants.
The sod grants.
Yeah, that's, it's the same thing we apply for every year.
Right.
Yeah.
But we talked about blighted and redeveloped properties and that kind of thing, so it read very much the same, and I just wanted to be clear what we were doing with the two pots of money. We weren't.
In that same vein, could you give us a thumbnail sketch of where additional funding might come from that could go into this? Other sources of-
Funds generated by, through annexation, for example. So, if you've got money set aside for neighborhood improvement or revitalization, it could be funneled into this account to be used.
Grants funding as well and-
Potentially, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
As we've discussed this, one of the recurring themes in our conversations was the transfer of properties purchased with these funds to partner community development entities. And unless I've missed it, I don't see any reference to that here. And I don't think the intent of this is to purchase and hold on to properties, but I want to make sure that there's some reference to that as a, an express purpose of funding this line.
No, that was the intent. I don't know that we ever set out to articulate that within this particular piece of legislation.
Okay. I'm wondering if we couldn't say something along the lines of, and this is not, I don't want to be, you know, prescriptive and restrictive. I want to, but, you know, given that it was the intent and it's been referenced several times, is that, you know, what if we said something along the lines of, whereas the city agrees to transfer these properties purchased with this fund for redevelopment to non-governmental community development partner entities or something like that? I mean, something broad.
You could even say to return them to the tax rolls where, you know, they were a tax-
To return them to the tax rolls would be fine.
Yeah, I think whatever, what you said was even-
That was, what I said was more restrictive.
Yes.
Yeah, that would worry me a little bit.
Okay.
That's descriptive with the expectation.
Any governmental agency would be tax-exempt, so if we're returning it to the tax rolls, then-
Whereas the city intends to return these, or whereas the city agrees to return these properties to the tax rolls, whereas the objective of this fund, whereas the objective of this fund is to return properties to the tax-
I mean, you could even put it in there in the capped parts, establish for the purpose of purchase and redeveloping troubled properties and returning those properties to the tax rolls.
I like it.
That would exclude giving them to a nonprofit or a church if they were putting a facility on there. So, I like the word intent. The intent is.
Okay. Maybe we should put it in the whereas clause.
Maybe we should, but, you know, if it were going to be an SNHS or Habitat property, it would be returned to the tax rolls.
Right. But it, there may be some property that we clean up with using these funds that ends up being a better place for community use, and a church, a neighbor church takes it on, or a nonprofit takes it on and buys the property to build it. Then it would not be on the tax rolls, but it would still meet what we're trying to do, because we got rid of the blighted property and made it, turned it, returned it to a useful state.
Maybe so.
So, could we use, could we use the operative word "will" instead of "shall"? That gives us a leeway.
I like the intent part. We intend to, or the goal is to return it to the tax rolls or to a non-taxable entity that-
Well, we're here at first reading, too, so we have time to think about it.
Yeah, let's work on that language.
Okay.
I think you understand where we're headed. Can you add a line, add a whereas clause that captures the many ideas you've heard in the last 60 seconds?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. Again, this is for first reading. Ordinance number 2344. All right. All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on our agenda is ordinance number 2345. This is the relocation, abandonment, relocation of the land that includes a portion of a cul-de-sac at Stanley Court. Entertained a motion to approve ordinance 2345.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any discussion? All right, we have, we do have one request for comment. Mr. Salimi?
Yes.
Am I saying that right?
There's available questions.
Okay, all right. Any discussion, comments, questions? Questions of Mr. Salimi? Thank you for being here. All right. With that, all those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. And that concludes our published agenda this evening. We do have one other request for comment. Mr. Stu Lear, Mr. Lear?
I wanted to bring up something. I just got some tax bills, and I don't think the public is completely aware of a rain tax, or I'm sorry, a fee that's been, that's on the property tax bill. And if, if you look at your property tax bill and you look under what the taxes are going for, there's a city storm water fee, which is really a tax, and every property's going to have it. I got, I've got probably close to 100 properties in town, and I only received six letters regarding these properties. So, I'm sure that most of the people have not received letters that this tax is being applied to their tax bill, and I know it was passed by the council, et cetera, but I do believe that a lot of people probably wouldn't be aware, and they probably get just slided through on the tax bill, and it gets paid, and I think if you look at it, a lot of people are think are going to be upset. What bothered, what brought this to my attention, I was looking at this, and I got a tax bill for a couple of lots, actually right under where Von Zeggers lives on Fitzwater Street. My deceased mother-in-law had those properties for 50, 60 years, and they've been passed on to us, but there's nothing on there. There's vacant lots. And I says, well, why, why am I giving tax for a water tax? And I looked at the letter, and it doesn't say anything regarding a minimum tax on any bills. And so, I called up the number that was on this letter, and I talked to a gentleman there, and he, he basically stated that he wasn't too well aware of what's going on, and he asked for a tax account ID number. Well, on your tax bill, you don't have a tax ID number. So, we never did communicate, get to communicate about these properties, but then he pulled up the ordinance, and he said that there was a minimum tax associated with these properties, and that's $20. I just wonder what the mall at the north end of town's going to pay with all the impervious services they have. But then I started thinking a little bit more about this, and I said, you know, I looked at why this water rain tax was being applied. And I look at, I go to Trinity Church outside service at La Quinta Inn on Sundays, and we look out there after a rainstorm, and it is absolutely embarrassing for the City of Salisbury what that river looks like. Styrofoam cups, trash, everything laying out there. And here we have the biggest hotel in the middle of the city. Everybody comes and visits, sees that. All the people go to church on Sunday, outside church, see that. It's embarrassing. But then I started looking around, and I go by the city park a number of times a day since I own Glengarn Apartments in that direction. And about three weeks ago, I come by there, there's two city street sweepers there. And I look at them, and the first one is going along, sweeping the street. There's no, nothing on the street. The second one's about two blocks behind the first one, and he's following the first one down the street, and neither one picking up a thing. So, then I start driving around the rest of the town, and I started looking at the curbs and gutters of the areas there, and this was right before the rainstorm. Now, I'd like- Now I'd like to pass, this is just two pictures that have, are, are basically what all the cur, or all the storm drains look like. This is what, could you pass it along, Tom? This is, this is what we're facing, this is what's going into the river. Now, on this thing here, we're going to put, we have put fancy nets around the storm drains that catch this, the, the material going in. We've put, we've done all sorts of things, we bought, I think we even bought a boat in the city to have the, the people go around skim the water off, off the, or skim the trash off the rivers and everything. Why don't we go back to the root cause? Why don't we go back and get it off the streets? In fact, why don't we go back a little further and get it to the people that are throwing it on the streets? When is the last time this city issued a littering ticket to somebody throwing a Coke can, a beer can, or whiskey bottle, or whatever in the curb gutter? It's about time we did it, and I think if you pass out a few five-hundred dollar tickets, you won't have that much trash on the streets. Number two, I'll bet you, over the last six, seven years, I've been in front of the council seven, eight times suggesting that we pass an ordinance saying that on Tuesday at eight o'clock, your car has to be out of this street because we're going to sweep it, if it's not out of the street, it'll be towed. All that trash is by these cars that stay there many times for, for months, and they don't move, trash piles up, when it rains, it all goes into the storm gutter. Let's go back and get the root cause of these problems, instead of sitting there taxing, putting a tax out that really should be handled in the first place by good management of the city. I've got two things that I wanted to discuss.
Can we handle them one at a time? Because I, I'd like to, I'd like to...
Do you want to rebuttal on that?
May I please? Not a rebuttal, not at all. But, and normally I wouldn't respond, but I don't think I could have made a better argument for a stormwater utility fee than the one you just made. That was, that was the best pro-stormwater utility fee argument I have ever heard, and in fact, you took pictures of the infrastructure that the fee pays for, which is great, because, you know, it, it's not a tax, because it, it's a fee that pays for a service that you've been receiving without paying for it for quite a long time.
It's on my tax bill, I take it as a tax, and the city, the people in the city will take it as a tax.
But here, but here's the thing, it is on your tax bill. It is on your tax bill because not every property gets water in the city. Not everybody gets a water bill in the city.
Wouldn't we need to, wouldn't we needed to have needed that storm? I wouldn't have a problem of, for doing the infrastructure of, of the city and improving its storm drains and stuff, if we handled that problem first. So first we handle that. If that cleans up the river like we want to do and everything, then, then maybe we don't need to do some of this other stuff.
And fortunately, what, what you've identified here, you know, which I think every single council member agrees with you on, and I, I think everybody in the administration agrees with you on too, is that, is that more effective management of the problem and more effective marketing of the punishment for mistreating our river and mistreating our streets and mistreating our infrastructure, more effective marketing of those tools is going to help reduce the problem. And it's, in part, if you look at what the, the fee pays for, it's in part going to help reduce that. But I, I also agree with you, you came to our very first coffee with your council, and you told us we needed to do that...
Move the cars?
Move the cars, ordinance, and I agree with you on that, so we'll...
Sweep the street.
We'll work on taking that up.
Especially if, if you know it's rainstorm's coming, get that stuff out of the gutters.
I think we all...
That's what we try to do now.
Mr. Stevens?
We're constantly deploying resources to clean storm drains prior to pending rain.
Hold it, hold it. Now, now, I've watched them do that. They go out to the, to a storm drain like that, they'll clean five feet before the storm drain, five feet after the storm drain, fifteen feet down the road, there's trash all over the place. When you get a big range torrential rain, what happens to that trash that's fifteen feet away? It goes to the storm drain. You don't clean just the storm drain, you clean the gutter and everything.
Well, we'll work hard to do a better job.
First go back, pass some littering laws and, or pass some littering tickets. Okay.
If I could...
Topic number two. I, I sat in here about six weeks ago, and it took me this long to get through the Freedom of Information Act some information back. Our mayor sat there and waved a bunch of papers in front of the council, and you didn't pass the ordinance that had to do with the four-to-two, three-to-two reductions. He probably picked out one of my properties, and I'm a little hard of hearing, I was sitting back there, and I says, you know, is that my property you was talking about? And sure enough, it was. In the last eighteen months, seven oh seven Camden has had over fifty calls for service by the police department. Well, I went back and I threw the Freedom of Information Act, that fifty in the last eighteen months is actually eight, eight calls. He went back all the way to two thousand, or two thousand and six and pulled out, pulled out the calls for service on these properties. This is the second time he's done this to me, he did this once before, years ago, and actually, the, the news media and everybody pretty well chastised him, said he, he really screwed up. He didn't do his homework. Again, he didn't do his homework because even the few calls for service that we had on those properties, and we have seven units, this property is, a lot of the older people know, is the old doctor's offices on the left side of Camden, the long white buildings, and they've been there. They've got seven units in there, only two of them are three-to-two units, the rest are two, two occupants or, or one occupant. And, and, just a little plug, Dee White, who lives on the next house, seven oh nine Camden, been there fifty, sixty, seventy years, stop by and ask her about Stu Lear and Bob Malone and how they are as landlords. We sweep, we, when the, when there's snow, we shovel her walks for her. When, when she has, when the city writes them up for chipping peanut pie, we actually go over there and help her out on that. She's our neighborhood watch person, if she sees something going on in that building, she calls us up, and we react, just like that. Go ask her. Ask Chief Duncan if we do not react when we are called or when we know about a problem. We, we're the first ones to put people on a thirty-day notice if we have drugs or anything like that. But just for, for the heck of it, the ones that, that were, that, of those ones I just mentioned that, that were coming up, we have things, very important things like other public service, suspicion, improperly parked motor vehicle, juvenile problem, well, okay. Criminal servants, okay, I'll, I'll take responsibility for that. Missing person, okay. We can't, we're not supposed to report a missing person or tenants aren't? Suspicion, what is suspicion? And other disturbance. Those are, those are the kinds that we, we're bad landlords because we, we know them. Well, I'm a little in, I'm a, I'm not a little, I'm very upset that the mayor keeps looking at our properties and saying, hey, you guys got a problem, and he puts out bogus figures, sits right there, waves the things in, in front of the council's face. Now, I'd like to see it stopped. I'd like to see him do, if he's a teacher, he should be doing his homework before he comes in front of the council, and before he disparages people that are trying to do a good job here. Go around, go around the Camden area. I'll tell you, the city, I'm sorry to say, is going back downhill again. Not only are, and most of renters' houses in that area are looking pretty good. Well, you go down there, owner-occupied houses, some rental houses, weeds in the curb and gutter you won't believe, they're, they're all over the place. And I can show you, if you'd like to take a look at my iPhone, I can show you pictures I took today. Now, it, there's something going on here, okay. There's something going on, we need to get that under control, because Chief Duncan has talked about broken window theory. Well, that's part of a broken window theory. If those streets look pretty, the people don't have any respect for it, and they throw their trash out. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Okay. We also have scheduled this evening a closed session. I'll now entertain a motion to convene and close session.
So moved.
Seconded.
Think I heard Shani first, and Tim second. Any discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we're closed.